All right, good evening. I'm going to call to order the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners. September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, regular business meeting. Our first item is our invocation and reflection. I've heard Commissioner Gisler will grace us with that.
Thank you. Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, as we gather here to make decisions for our community, bless us that we may use our best skills and judgment. Guide us as we consider the merits and pitfalls pitfalls of each matter that comes before us. Grant us the wisdom to act in the best interest of our community and fellow citizens. Help us show respect for each other and our community. Please grant us the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Finally, watch over the men and women who keep us safe at home and abroad. Amen.
Thank you. We'll go to item three, which is our roll call clerk.
Commissioner Dillou?
Here.
Commissioner Gisler?
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Here.
Commissioner Mazur?
Here.
Commissioner Morales?
Present.
Commissioner Ray?
Present.
Chair Strebs?
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Here.
You have nine present.
Thank you. We'll go to item.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I would respectfully request that you adjourn this meeting to the call of the chair in order to call the other meeting back into session. To conclude it.
The council, we did call the prior committee, the hold to order. We approved. We made a motion to come out of closed session. We did approve minutes and then we adjourned. We were just being on top of it.
My apologies. Thank you, ma'am.
That is all right. Thank you for keeping us in order, council. Much appreciated. Excellent. Okay, we'll move forward to proclamations versus item twenty twenty five eleven fifty seven. This is a request for the approval of proclamation recognizing September twenty twenty five as National Recovery Month. Motion is made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Commissioner Wheeler. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll go next to item twenty twenty five eleven ninety eight. This is a request of approval of proclamation proclaiming September as National Service Day Month. Motion made by Commissioner Dillou, supported by Commissioner Wheeler. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll go to our third, is our item twenty twenty five eleven ninety seven. Request for approval of proclamation recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Support.
Motion made by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries as well. All right. Through proclamations, let's go. Yes, Commissioner Wheeler.
I'm sorry, were you moving to the next proclamation? There's one more.
I was looking through my paper pack and maybe I skipped over one, so my apologies.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Please, go for it.
I'll move to approve the proclamation designated September as National Suicide Prevention Month.
Thank you, Commissioner Wheeler. Motion made by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Commissioner Ray. Is there any further discussion? All the seeing that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Okay, now we'll move forth to item number five, communications. So we have a number of annual reports that we are in receipt of. The first is item twenty twenty five ten forty nine. This was from the Office of the Administrator, their twenty four annual report. We have any questions or comments from the board? All right, well, I will just share in brief. I was joking with some colleagues. It was like a analog of the dream team. Looking through that. So, you know, this is the group of people that I get the privilege to work closest with. In county government, we have many, many talented departments and staff, but I just want to thank the entire administrative cabinet, Dr. Catlin, Office of Corporation Counsel, our deputy administrators, Smith and Cole, our DEI department, our public information officer, I mean, administrative services team. I can't remember if I already said the DEI department, and also our emergency management, a new addition. So the community has an opportunity hopefully to review materials here. We're watching really a a forward thinking and deeply talented team, and I just want to thank you guys for all of that. Each and every day that we're working together. It's good stuff and I'm grateful for it. So, thank you. Okay, let's go on to our next, which was the receipt of the Parks Expo twenty twenty four annual report. You have any thoughts or comments there? All right. And just in brief, because I don't want these to just feel passed over, but our parks are extensive. And, you know, recently we celebrated the expansion of the Wollom Nature Preserve. And I really want to thank Director Rakowitz and that entire team. We're glad to see, you know, even the seasonal park staff, the wages have been elevated. We're working together to support the vibrancy of the parks and to all of our donors and Director Rakowitz for the visioning to get us open at Wollom. It's a lot of work. And we really appreciate it. Okay, we'll go. The next item was twenty twenty five eleven seventy six, offices, the medical examiner's report. Within this report, we can see information about what is happening to, you know, the population. In Kalamazoo, we've had ongoing changes within the medical examiner's office. We're appreciative of the day in and day out work that's done to analyze what's happening in our community, understanding the impacts of a number of social factors, including the impact of overdoses in the community. That's, I think, probably often very thankless work and very hard work. So we are thankful to them as well. Okay, beyond our annual reports, we also received our monthly financial report. We received a board update on the housing millage, received an email from Barry Burnside expressing concerns regarding a potential data center in Pavilion Township. And we also received resolution twenty five forty seven from the City of Kalamazoo, establishing a commercial district located at two sixty one East Kalamazoo Avenue. Are there any other communications from the board? I will mention, I received a couple from our web interface. Community members very concerned about the close of Wings West and the impact of youth hockey community. And I also received some communications from an unhoused family currently hoteling, spending nearly seven thousand dollars a month just to stay in a hotel and hoping desperately maybe they'll get services when we eventually open the landing place. I'll be in ongoing communication with them around supports. Okay, we'll go next to approval of minutes, item number six. How to entertain a motion?
Support.
Motion made by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler to approve the September second, twenty twenty five draft committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Let's go to item seven, approval of the agenda. Commissioner. Commissioner Wheeler, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If, at the request of another commissioner, if Commissioner Hepler would amend his motion to allow for a motion to add an item to the new business part of the agenda. Thank you.
If I could add an amendment to add to the agenda, the discussion around the purchasing of real property. Oh, that one. Ah, right here. Thank you. Okay. Oh, no, that's. Thank you. Ah, okay. To add to Vice Chair Pro Tem's motion, consideration of the purchase of property commonly known as two two four West Kalamazoo Ave., Kalamazoo, Michigan, be placed on the agenda under new business.
Okay, motion made to add the item to new business, supported by Vice Chair Taylor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? That motion carries. All right, I'll make a secondary motion for the agenda as amended. Thank you. Motion made by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler for the agenda as amended, supported by Vice Chair Taylor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Great, that motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Okay. Going to move next to item eight, under presentations. And what we have here, we're going to conduct some interviews for the road commission of Kalamazoo County. All right, so we'll just take them up as in order as presented within the agenda. And so we'll bring forth first, Ms. Toni Kennedy. Toni, you are welcome to either join us at the podium or as I offer at our committee of the whole, if you'd like to sit as well, that is perfectly acceptable, wherever you are most comfortable.
I like to try to call her sometimes.
Yes.
So, so I appreciate being here. Thank you very much. I'm Toni Kennedy. I'm a veteran of the United States Army. And I am honored to be here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Appreciate your time. It's always good to see you and appreciate you being with us. So we're just going to go around robin. We don't have as many questions as commissioners, but we'll kind of pass it along. You know me already. I am Commissioner Jen Strebs. I'm representing District Number Two. And I'm going to take our first question. Sure, I have this. Thank you. Okay. All right, Ms. Kennedy, what do you know about this advisory board or authority? And why are you interested in serving on it?
So what I know about the advisory board, I actually took your description and just made it mine, just letting you know, no plagiarism. But the Board of County Road Commissions is charged with the responsibility of construction and maintenance of the Kalamazoo County infrastructure system. At least four of the five board members must reside in a township and are six-year staggered terms. And I went ahead and adopted that because it just really says what what it is all about. And why I want to serve is because I am certain that I bring the resident perspective to the table. And I am excited about this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, will you take our second?
Thank you. What experience do you have that is related to the work of the authority? This could be professional experience or experience you have from the community or township.
Thank you for the question. So I currently sit on several boards within our community. This has prepared me for understanding policies and for what the community needs. I am a community girl, a person. I enjoy helping and serving the community. And the only way you're really going to know anything about what's happening in the community is if you're a part of it. And I enjoy being a part of it. Thank you for the question.
Commissioner Mazur, thank you.
Hello. Thank you for being here tonight. Share what you have learned from working with people from different cultures.
Excuse me for reading. Sometimes I'm off the cuff and I'm really okay, but I thought that it was really important to value your time. So I will be reading some and expanding in other areas if I need to be. So I believe the best policy are made when there are different backgrounds at the table. It makes it all inclusive and a very well-rounded board. That means that everybody has a seat at the table, even if they're not all present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Toni. John Gisler. I represent five of the fifteen rural townships.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. What training or education have you received in diversity, equity, and inclusion and justice? How will you use what you have learned in your work with this advisory authority?
So I've served on several committees which have provided training in that capacity. So I've had actually formal training at DEI. I've done things such as implicit bias within the different organizations that I have been involved with and in my previous employer as well. Cultural competence seminars focusing on understanding and appreciating and responding to differences in background, not to mention the fact that I also, you know, I also am Hispanic and and bring something to the table that's a little different. So I do understand different cultures as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, Toni.
Hi, Commissioner. How you doing?
What do you expect the advisory board to give to the community and how can you help the work of the advisory board?
So what I, what I expect the advisory board authority to give to the community is inclusivity. And why I say that is I feel that it's extremely important for the neighborhood to be represented. I think our neighborhoods should be represented. I feel block by block we should hear from our residents and know what our residents need, especially if you have a resident who or someone who serves on the board that is out within the community and has a good pulse of what they need in the community and bring that back. So that's what I am expecting and and what I bring is the resident perspective and the neighborhood approach, as I said before. Yep.
Excuse me. Good evening. Tammy Ray, I represent District One. What are three things that a member of the advisory board or authority should consider?
I believe we should consider these three things. A process that impacts residents. You know, we should know what our residents need and want. Communication with the residents. It's something that I feel that all boards need to do better at. And most importantly, learning and understanding. I would like to be the conduit connection between the resident and this organization.
Thank you.
Hi, Toni. I'm Abigail Wheeler. I represent District Four. The question I have is, what is the greatest strength that you'll bring to this authority?
I am a great advocate for best practices. When I believe in something, I will be the biggest advocate that you can have. There's so much to me. I'm a veteran. I'm Hispanic. I, you know, I live in a regular neighborhood. I love my township. And I'm there for my township. As you well know, I also serve as trustee. And I'm always out there advocating for my community. And, you know, I'm not afraid to knock on doors. I'm not afraid to ask the hard questions. And I'm not afraid to be a team player when that's warranted. And that's, that's what I bring. That's who I am.
Hello there, Commissioner Morales, District Three, Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Are you available for the meetings and times associated with this one?
Yes, I am available. They are bi-weekly each month at three P M. And the location is in that magnificent building. And I believe it's Comstock. So yes, I am available, very much so.
Thank you. I have, I'm Jeff Hepler, as you well know, and I have the hardest question of all tonight. Do you have any questions of us?
Well, my question is that I want to know what is the area of impact this board wants to see in this new commissioner?
Commissioner Morales?
I would like to see, and I have seen change with constituents putting in ticket order, tickets, service requests, to see those handled a little more thoroughly, I would say. I get phone calls from mainly township folks, not no one in my area when trees fall down or we have storms. I get a lot of Facebook requests and sometimes it takes for us to contact the road commission to get the job done. And I don't want to keep doing that. I want folks on that board to get the tickets or, you know, have a smoother process. Not to say that they're not busy and overwhelmed. I don't know because I don't work out there. And I know we're limited during storm times to help everybody, but I don't want to hear about the same request three months later. So more efficiency for me.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Thanks, Chair. With, you know, the road commission, I would like to see a more, a bigger focus on non-motorized. We have a really big bicycling community that likes to go outside of, you know, the city of Kalamazoo, the city of Portage. And I think that Kalamazoo is uniquely positioned to be able to connect some of our non-motorized ways with other communities and really put us on the map and, you know, make it more accessible for everybody.
Thank you.
I'll just say I agree with both of those sentiments as priorities, in particular that customer service component for the road commission. That's important. Along with thinking about how we design infrastructure to slow things down and keep people safe. And that looks different in different parts of the county. That might look different in a neighborhood than it looks on a rural street. And I'd like consideration to that sort of like design framework. All right. Ms. Kennedy, I appreciate you.
Can I just, so currently if the road commission wants to pick up a tree, it can take up to a year unless nine one one is called. I look forward to looking at policies and suggestions for residents regarding those potholes that I'm ready to fill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Appreciate that. All right, wonderful. Okay, next we will welcome forward Mr. Kevin Traer. And you're welcome to come to the podium. You're also welcome to sit at the dais if you'd like as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Name's Kevin Traer, live in Richland Township, the village of Richland, and the county of Kalamazoo and all of that. So I want to thank you all for the time this evening. And I too want to start out and I believe that I have the qualifications that are needed, but I, I can't stress enough where my heart is for this community. And I think I've done it in front of this committee before and coming here several times and the road commission itself. So I look forward to any of the questions you have, and I hope that as I go through, we can thread through all of these into my, I'd hate to have to read all of this stuff, but it's all here if you need to see it. But thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, we'll go around just as we have just done. You'll hear the same set of questions. So can you share with us what you know about this authority and why you're interested in serving on it?
I actually have gone before it. So I've been on the other side from the community side and when I was coming forth with the postal service asking for the board's help on the traffic concerns out at Ninth Street because that was my bailiwick too, was part of that is the deceleration lanes and the excessive traffic. My, what I really respect a lot of what they're doing is one, it's, it's necessary to me is my, if I get this position is the efficacy, the safety and the follow-through for the community and to listen to people that come forward before that board. I never was mistreated anytime that I went there and I don't plan on ever doing that to anybody else or be dismissive to anybody. Because that is what they're there for. They're here to listen to people. They're there to represent you all as well and to be a voice and also to bring back concerns, so.
But thank you.
What experience do you have that's related to the work of the authority? And this could be professional or experience you have from the community?
With the United States Postal Service, I put over thirty-three years in. Erose from the ranks from janitor to manager of the plant maintenance in Kalamazoo, I became a contracting officer's representative. I've overseen million-dollar-plus projects, which is to do with parking lots, ADA requirements, sidewalks, infrastructure for ninety-seven post offices in southwest Michigan. My job was to sign off and review all the contractors' work on that for headquarters and the area level. My position also came with the authority or the expectation that I could be held criminally and financially responsible for any misrepresentation of whatever. So when I signed off on those projects as the local official, not only my freedom was at risk, but my integrity was too. And I, I was in charge of multiple projects. I know how to work with contractors about the density of asphalt or the ADA requirements. Were originally, the postal service was waived from that and with public outcry and justly so, had to comply immediately with anything. So when any of the sidewalks were changed and the curbing, anything that was going on had to be done. Any of the complaints that came in in the ninety-seven post office, I was sent out to give that briefing back to headquarters and to get those projects put on our facilities list ASAP. So and and again, my accreditation's in here. I was an adjunct distance learning person for environmental OSHA, storm water runoff pollution prevention plans. I had to sign off on those for Kalamazoo Main and the Ninth Street facility for the detention bonds and the vehicle maintenance facility there. If you want to look at that accreditation, N C E D is the postal service terminology. It's the National Center for Employment Development. It's a thousand people at a time out there. And I was certified through them to be a distance instructor for all of that stuff. So I have multiple certifications that I took place over years. I was a member of the National Electrical Code Association. I have all the certifications and training in here. My training is that little fine print on every one of these pages and all the certifications that gave me that authority to represent the United States Postal Service and its expectations, which are also audited by the United States Postal Inspection Service and the Office of Inspector General that have both law enforcement over that. So of that time, I received thirty-three commendations for my performance and never any disciplinary action.
Good evening. Share what you have learned from working with people from different cultures.
Well, one, I am a state-certified mediator. I was going to go on to the restorative justice program, but that was the week of COVID after I got certified the week before. But since then, I also am the vice, Michigan Area Vice President for Postal Supervisors, Managers, and Postmasters. I represent the entire states of Michigan and Indiana. On that, I represent people in those types of things. I also prepare cases to go before the. On that, I represent people in those types of things. I also prepare cases to go before the MSPB Board, Merit System Protection Board, which also deals with certain things like this. I just recently got a decision in April representing a female postmaster who was being charged with alleged discrimination. I do both sides of this type of thing. The board ruled in our favor with prejudice and dismissed the case against the person that I was representing. Also, I have represented my craft employees and helped them. I had about one-third of my department were disabled veterans. I had other types of disability people that worked with me, and I too was hired to the postal service due to the disabilities. Well, at that time, it was, it just slips my mind for a second, but it wasn't DEI, it was affirmative action. I was hired in nineteen eighty-six under the disabilities program. I also took that and took my platform as janitor and rose up to manager and took that position and promoted many of those people that wanted not necessarily go into management, but wanted to go up from the entry-level positions into having one of the departments with the first female mechanics, higher level, and also going on to helping them even go into management if they chose to. And over the years, in the AO post offices, several postmasters have been promoted because mentoring to them as an advocate for the National Association of Postal Supervisors, I went out and gave them training. And also sat on many committees. I sat on, at one particular time, a committee of trying to get more Hispanics in the Grand Rapids area promoted into management. And I sat on that with Juan Garcia, unfortunately he's passed away now, on that committee to do what we could do to get other cultures involved, to get prepared, to get elevated up into our district.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Kevin, I'm John Gessler, as you heard, and I represent five of the fifteen rural townships. Tell me what training and education you've received in diversity, equity, inclusion and justice? And how will you use what you've learned in your work with this advisory authority?
Well, as I rose to the rank of management, we're required annually to receive training. But also part of our duties and responsibilities is to train our employees and to have ongoing service talks and do that on a regular basis. Those are documented and those are tracked through the system of the United States Postal Service, Distance Learning and LDNC, Diversity and Development Center. Those are not only mandatory, but they're required by federal law. And I've been trained in all of that. I've also given that training numerous times. I also, as part of being an area vice president, have hosted six, eleven state training seminars. And then we bring in people to do the training. We also do training like that. I do that training. I have, all of my accreditation is through and at the federal level and through the postal service, which has its own standards that they go through. I also sat on a maintenance review board for compliance on a hiring position for entry-level maintenance employees. And I, I, along with the other people that were on that committee, were the third level testing that standard to make sure. And we pointed out still at being the third and final panel, there were deficiencies that did not accept other people's disabilities or needs of comprehension or things like that. They were suggested and they were changed, and then the ultimate test was approved before the occupational psychology group at postal headquarters. So I've done all of that type of thing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Traer, what do you expect the advisory board to give to the community and how can you help with the work of the advisory board?
Well, I, I've noticed some things and I heard some things even here too. You know, I've, I brought some concerns forward and some of them haven't been addressed. And some of them deal with traffic in the rural areas where I live. And some of them were just site obstructions and things like that. I know that people are busy. But to be honest with you, this is my wheelhouse. This is where, if you brought something like that to me, I can figure things out like that. That's what I did with my job. I started out with field maintenance for all ninety-seven post offices in southwest Michigan and the four-nine-oh, four-nine-one, later to going on to managing those. Also, again, that type of experience also got me the position of contracting officer's representative. And I also would make suggestions also to simplify, improve with the utmost attention on safety first and what's going to need to be addressed. Everybody has a full plate. Everybody's come up with different things, but if you don't have board with different ideas or willing to come forth and present things, then it just stays the same over and over again. But I have also received financial compensation for ideas that I came up with. One project was dealing with a safety in the Benton Harbor post office. Contractor said that they were going to do the job at sixty thousand dollars with no guarantee. I ended up coming up with a solution. It ended up costing twenty-five hundred dollars and was adopted by the postal service and I received financial compensation for that as well. So I have a lot of knowledge into trying to think and, and look through things, especially when you don't have any money. Especially when you don't have any money. I managed a three-million-dollar budget and came twenty percent under. And when I left as postmaster at Richland, when my job was riffed and I took postmaster in my hometown, I, I can't tell you how much money in stamp stock I had, but it was thousands. Not one stamp was missing after three years. And there's a lot of financial stuff there too. So, but my thing is really is transparency, efficacy, follow-through, commitment, and having a passion for what we want to do with our community.
Good evening. Tammy, where I represent District One. What are three things that a member of this authority should consider?
Of me or of the, of the board? What I should consider, first of all, I really am going to rely on my efficacy. That's one that I hope that you can appreciate. True, my knowledge, or second, my knowledge of safety. And three, my vocational experience, which is everything from pollution prevention to OSHA. I was taken in two thousand twenty through twenty-nine CFR nineteen-ten, OSHA Right to Know Law, the entire book. We went from a week for training from front to back on all of that. I later went on to teach all of that things. I think I can also bring that to the county road commission staff as well. Because I still teach it. I can still do all of that things. There are still things I do. The ongoing stuff that I did here was through the postal service and through federal certifications, and they have timelines. I'm also versed in manifest trainer signing and managing for environmental waste. I could go out in that building and go through anything and say, this is a problem or it isn't a problem right now to this day. And I've been retired for five years. But I still think I have a lot of, of potential and a, and a commitment for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abigail Wheeler, I represent District Four. My question for you is, what is the greatest strength that you'll bring to this authority?
Well, I think my vocational knowledge is it, my passion for this community. I've served as five years as a deputy sheriff reserve. I had to take a, a early retirement from that, from an industrial accident that I was almost killed by. That's also my passion of safety, of not letting that happen. I've served as twenty-one years for the Gulf Lake Life Care Ambulance and helped merge the ambulance to life care and was the last volunteer. And I served Richland and Ross Townships areas and the surrounding areas for twenty-one years. Went on after retiring from that, from teaching from the Red Cross for five more years during Hurricane Katrina and doing things like that. Sixteen years with the Boy Scout Pack and Troop of Two-Ninety-Four in Richland. Six years recently with Alliance Club. And it sounds like last night, Papa's going to get back into the Boy Scouts because my grandson's going into Tiger Cubs. So I think that shows my passion for this community. And I did all of this, starting with a twenty-month-old, who's now forty, who works in the postal service in his career with his father. He's forty now. And everybody says, well, they don't have enough time. I did all of that while I was a single parent and still holding down my jobs. And was branch president of the management organization, joint state president at the same time, and now I'm on the executive board, so.
Morales, District Three, welcome.
Thank you.
Are you available for the dates and times?
Well, since I'm semi-retired, I am retired, but yes, I am, and I appreciate that. Because if I couldn't commit to this time, I wouldn't come forward to it. Yes, we all know where it might be times here or there that could be an absolute thing, but only with justification would I ever say that I can't make it to something. And that I have given that type of commitment to every one of those organizations. Every one of them at the same time. And I still am in some of those types of organizations. I serve on three panels for the National Executive Board. Staffing at the postmasters, staffing at the plants, and the legislative committee that I have been on for thirty-three years. I have a great experience in Capitol Hill. Okay, don't laugh about all that stuff. I know what it is, but I've been on the Hill for over thirty years and know how to deal with both sides of the aisle on anything. I had spent twenty-five years working successfully with Congress and Upton in our area who helped lead that consolidation mass at Ninth Street, which also, thank you all, kept fourteen of those seventeen post offices being closed. And, and you can see the disastrous decision they've already done and the impact. This commission, with Commissioner Hepler right by my side at that particular time, but me coming back, boy, you were the first ones that wrote the resolution to went to Louis Delay, I mean DeJoy's desk. And when he finally got asked in that March of that next year, they wanted to know, I said, headquarters asked him, did you get any of Kevin's letters from Kalamazoo County? And we got them all. What are you going to do with them? We don't know yet. So thank you for all of that, but I'm here. I ain't going anywhere, so.
Thank you.
I'm Jeff Hepler from District Seven, and I got this hard question. Do you have any questions of us?
Well, again, just like the lady before me, what are your expectations? Because ultimately, we serve the county, but you serve the county people, all of you. And no matter where we're going, there's always a step up to what are we, what are we trying to do? Who are we trying to make sure that we get the information to? And ultimately, whoever you decide is going to do this is going to be the plus or minus of the decision you made. So I just, you know, want you to all know that if, if there's any reservation of anything, don't select me. Don't select me because I want you to understand, judge me on my efficacy, my experience and my commitment to this community already, so.
Thank you. I think we all want to see good quality roads. And that requires a partnership with our townships. The cities all take care of their own, they have their own Act Fifty-One monies, which they use to precipitate. But the partnering with other entities like the county road does now is very vital. And so we need to work together. This board is a mixture of city and township leaders. And we all want to work together to provide the best quality roads and infrastructure for our citizens and keep people safe. So I think that's just a rough ballpark idea.
Commissioner Morales?
Thank you, Chair. So my only other addition is, as we talk about how folks have served in DEI positions, I like to keep diversity not only on that board, but I'd like to see it across the employment of the employees that work for the road commission as well. Thank you.
If I could, I just wanted to add one thing. My job also was to adhere to the Davis-Bacon Act and also with disabilities and inclusion, things like that. It was when we had contractors come in, it was my job to brief and work with all of their staff and, and take whatever necessary measures to make sure everybody understood. And, and they had to sign off a book with me that all their employees would follow their policies and procedures and ours. And I had to do daily safety checks and observations over everybody so that I had to call off a few contractors that did not want to provide lockout-tagout for their electricians, so.
Could anything further? Mr. Traer, we appreciate you taking time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate your consideration and all the help you've already given for other things.
Yes, thank you. All right, I'll open up some discussion to commissioners. I'm seeing vice chair.
I think that last gentleman would make an excellent, excellent, and I hope he would consider the building authority. We are about to go into a huge, his experience and everything else. I, I, I think he should be applying for the building authority, and I think we should be, we, we have an opening on that. And I think he would be, be an excellent candidate, but.
Thank you for sharing that, Vice Chair. Commissioner Morales?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for highlighting that. I agree as well, especially with OSHA. I can't see his face. And it's okay. No, you're good. You're good. It's all good. So I agree with that. I, I am rooting for Ms. Kennedy. I've seen her in action, fighting on the township board for her community. I've seen her fight for tickets. And we all know just through her work with veterans that even off the clock, she is going to make sure that people get what they need, and she doesn't care what type of beating comes with that. So power of women. So that's where I would go. I would love to see this gentleman on the board authority and whip them into shape so that when we have projects, no one comes back and asks us for another five hundred thousand dollars for an elevator. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Delu-
Yeah, I'm not going to make the decision any easier. I love Ms. Kennedy's, I served with her on the veterans board. She has a lot of passion, and she'd be a great advocate for the public, although I don't think anybody can top Mr. Traer's professional experience, so. Being on the board appointments committee, it's one of those, when you interview two people, you wish there are two openings, but unfortunately there's not, so. I like them both. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Delu. Vice Chair Protop.
Thank you, Chair. We've had two very, very good candidates come forward to us on this, this very important position. I, I think they both show a great deal of professionalism and would bring a lot to the table. I, I think Mr. Traer has a very good passion for keeping things honest and moving in the right direction. I think they both, as Commissioner Delu pointed out, have, have been here to support their community. I tend to look at the experience and kind of lean towards Mr. Traer. But they're both would be great. I'd, I'd go for the building commission thing, but they need to get moving. I got a parking structure that needs to get built two years ago.
All right, I will just share some feedback as well. I mean, as colleagues have said, we have both very quality candidates who are passionate and committed servants to the community. I think looking at the assets and talents available to both, you know, considering where those talents are a best fit, we are going to have some discussion yet this evening about endeavoring in quite an in-depth construction endeavor. And the building authority is- And the building authority is a network on on things that it does now, but it is missing uh, an additional component. And so uh, another person can be appointed to that body, uh, maybe to help them uh, move more expeditiously in some of the tasks in front of them, um, which would be a tremendous benefit. Um, and so seeing that potential, and also, you know, for me in Kalamazoo Township, really, that connection with how we get the community uh, heard and bought into the way we respond to customer service issues and plan in a long-term way uh, with road projects. Uh, I will support Ms. Kennedy for this evening and would enthusiastically encourage Mr. Traer uh, to consider another opening, I think is by far a very, very good fit for him.
Just a question, are we, is that confirmed, or there is an opening on the?
There is an opening confirmed.
So we've had his interview tonight, so that would count.
The Board Appointments Committee could take up that discussion and determine, uh, and we could move a motion from the floor as well. Right. Uh, Vice Chair Taylor.
Um, yeah, we are about to um, go into some serious, how about a hundred and twenty, a hundred, a hundred and some million dollar plus um, building projects with the parking garage, with the household hazardous ways, with an administration center, with everything else. Um, Mr. Traer's experience with OSHA, with Davis Bacon, um, with with continuing, I I I'm I'm not only encouraging him, I I would be very, I would be open to voting for him on that board from a floor um, right now, because we need a fifth member on that. As uh, Commissioner Hepler said, we need to get moving. Um, uh, trustee Kennedy's experience with the township, um, that is why I think I'm I'm in support of her for tonight. Um, her strength is sometimes also her weakness, she is a firecracker. But I think she's gonna do a good job um, at that, she is, she's good, that's a, that's a, that's a good thing. Um, but she's gonna, she's gonna go to the uh, road commission, and I think she's gonna do a good job, and she's gonna hold people accountable and and hold, keep people honest. Um, Mr. Traer, I I think needs to definitely, we're 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 about to do some serious building uh, in Kalamazoo County with, and I think he would be an excellent asset to that committee. And I'd be open to voting from the floor for him.
Commissioner Mazur.
I just wanna uh, agree with everything Vice Chair just said. Thank you.
Commissioner Morales, I'm sorry.
So we're gonna put a motion on the floor. I guess we asked, are you okay with that? Would you be open to the housing authority?
So. So let me, let's, uh, I appreciate, Commissioner Morales, uh, seeking clarification. So the the matter first before us that maybe we should handle is that we have a consideration for the appointment for road commission. And then whether or not we take up additional discussion at this time or in the future, um, and we can have additional dialogue around that.
So you need a motion for Ms. Kennedy?
If if you're so inclined.
I am so inclined. I move that we appoint uh, Ms. Kennedy to the road commission. Support.
Motion is made by Commissioner Morales, supported by Commissioner Wheeler, to point Tony Kennedy to Kalamazoo County Road Commission. What's discussion? All right, I am seeing none. Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Strebs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Yes.
Commissioner Delu?
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler?
No.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler? Commissioner Mazur? Commissioner Morales? You have seven yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Congratulations to Ms. Kennedy, and thank you again to Mr. Traer. So we could follow up, which I think would be more appropriate for some additional discussion, unless there's the uh, Vice Chair Taylor.
I don't want him to sneak out and say no. Um, I would like to make a motion to appoint Kevin Traer to the building authority and give him up to forty-eight hours to decide whether or not to accept.
Support.
Madam Chair.
Hold on, we, hold on, let me, let's keep in order. So I have a uh, motion from Vice Chair Taylor, I have support from Commissioner Morales, uh, counsel.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. All respect to Vice Chair Taylor, that motion is um, incorrect. There's another word I'm supposed to use to give me. However, um, it is my understanding that the building authority position is posted until October sixth. However, because that is a public posting, it has to remain open till then for applications. However, this body can't bring this back on night, and it's October seventh media. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, appreciate that. Uh, what action is taken by the board?
If it's posted, he's correct, but I hope that he applies on October sixth, and you have my support when you do.
Would you like to rescind your motion at this time?
Unfortunately, I will have to rescind my motion, I did not know it was posted.
Is there a support to rescind?
Oh, yes.
Yes, but I do hope that you apply.
All right, we will consider that motion uh, rescinded. All right, at this time, we were now move forward, thank you for the lively procedure, everybody. Okay. All right, we will now move forward, item number nine for public hearings, there are none this evening. Item ten, public comment opportunity can be made on the phone, eight five five nine two five two eight oh one, at meeting code one zero seven four eight, pressing star three to be in the work queue. If you wish to speak at both public comment periods, you must press star three again at any time after this initial session has ended. This is your first opportunity to address the board, you may have up to three minutes in a professional and respectful manner on any topic. Uh, once you're recognized, please share your name and where you're from, welcome supervisor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Texas Township Supervisor, Joanne O'Rourke, uh, talking to you tonight again about tornado recovery. I'd like to comment on the agenda item to return funds initially allocated by the county for tornado recovery in Texas Township, and ask that you approve our request to add those funds to those we have already forwarded to After the Storm to be used to help township residents affected by the May seventh tornadoes. While this is a relatively small amount of money, if you are among those helped by these funds, it is consequential for you and your family. This debate about the use of public funds on private property is frankly ludicrous. All of the damage in Texas Township, as well as pavilion and much of portage, was on private property. The most authoritative source of information about allowable use of funds for disaster recovery is arguably FEMA, whose guidelines state that funds may be used to restore private property to its pre-disaster condition. Restoration is not improvement. The conflation of these terms is what led to a divisive and harmful path in Texas Township. Fundamentally, the baseline is what the property looked like and was valued at prior to the damage. This has been an unnecessarily difficult process in Texas Township. Many of us in government are exhausted by this issue. However, I see and talk to people at least weekly who are still trying to recover, who have complications with insurers or contractors, or are still just figuring out how to cover cost. I have said many times, no one or very few have a hundred thousand dollars in their back pocket for nothing more than disaster recovery, then with property still at a diminished value from what it was originally. I regret the unnecessarily complicated path this funding has taken in Texas Township, despite my best efforts. But please do not further punish survivors due to the failures of those of us tasked with helping them. I have documented the issues we've had in the township regarding the recovery, and I had a productive email exchange with Dr. Catlin regarding those issues this week. I then forwarded all of that information to Senator McCann and Representatives Longjohn and Rogers with a request that one of them seek any needed clarification from the Attorney General so that no other community has to suffer further due to these legalistic issues when they are already in crisis from a natural disaster. Representative Longjohn took up my request and has forwarded my communication to the AG. I sincerely hope this will help us at a local government level avoid these issues in the future. Thank you, and thank you for your ongoing partnership.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? Welcome. I gotta turn your mic back on, Tony, the little person. There you got it.
Oh, cute person. Uh, Tony Kennedy, um, eleven fourteen, Arthur, I just wanted to thank you for your faith in me. And for those two commissioners that um, did not vote for me, I look forward to showing you and working with you that we could still work together, 'cause that's what diversity is all about. We don't always all have to be at the same table. Um, I do think that Mr. Traer will be excellent in his next capacity, and I look forward to being here, he gave me his card. Um, I look forward to not only working with him, but also being here to serve as an advocate for him on the date that you um, interview him um, in chambers. So again, thank you very much for your um, confidence. And I look forward to doing all those wonderful things that you need done in customer service. Take care, good night.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Do we have anyone else wishing to make public comment? Go, Mr. Traer.
Mr. Traer.
Welcome back.
Uh, well, you do have my commitment, even though I did switch gears, but that is the gears that I grew up in in the post office. I did save you from not bringing the stack I was going to of all the handbooks and manuals, the abbreviated versions, from fire suppression systems to elevator safety, to everything that the agency has sent me on out to Norman, Oklahoma to train on. My job was to oversee contractors and everything like that, to make sure they aren't ripping people off or overcharging. And I did oversee a million dollar elevator project at Miller Road and gave hell over that. But I I was trying to remember way back when, when I first met Tony, and it was through advocacy work through Congressman Upton's office and things like that. So we go back, I did exchange my card with her. You do have my commitment, I'm not quite sure what I'm supposed to look at on the sixth, by the name. But, okay, but I'll 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 go through, and then I will bring my bibles with me when they come to the next meeting. But you all, I understand how this works. I understand where your feelings are, I understand where your commitments are already at. But it also makes me feel really proud that you have the confidence to still want me to come forward and apply in front of you all again with my experience that I've given over the years. And I want you to know that um, one of the other things that I did with a, out of my highlight of my postal career, was out of all of this training and all this stuff, was on January third, two thousand thirteen, saving the life of one of my employees and being recognized by the Postmaster General and the President of the United States. So you have my commitment to nothing but giving you absolutely what you expect from the contractors or anybody else that works for the county. So thank you, and thank you, Tony, for all the kind support too.
Thank you, Mr. Traer. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? All right, good. Seeing none in chamber, Dina, is there anyone online?
Chair, we do not have anyone online.
All right, thank you so much. All right, let's go to item eleven, which is a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion is made by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Commissioner Morales, to move at one time by the roll, by a roll call vote, had to be considered as a consent agenda. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Chair Strebs?
That's a yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Yes.
Commissioner Delu?
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Nine yes.
That motion carries. All right, we will move now to unfinished business and general orders. We have none, we'll move next to item thirteen, new business, not consent. This is our, well, we'll take up the one in the agenda first. So item twenty twenty-five eight seventy-six, request for approval to terminate the ARPA agreement between Kalamazoo County and Texas Charter Township, and two, to establish a severe, severe weather disaster relief fund. Motion made by uh, Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler, will open for discussion. Commissioner Wheeler?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just have a few comments regarding this. Um, again, this is ARPA funding, just so everybody remembers, so it does have to be spent down. So I thought that we're anticipating more weather disasters, but it is possible. Um, spent down in twenty twenty-six, I should say that. Um, the other thing is that um, uh, I'm not exactly very pleased with how this is worded in the pack yet. I feel like this maybe should have been more up to discussion rather than terminating an agreement and establishing a different fund. You know, there was kind of split consensus on what we wanted to do with this money. Um, so to just come out and be like, no, we're, this is what we're doing, to me was a little abrupt. Um, I'm still for giving it to um, to Texas Township to give, or to re-agree to give it to After the Storm of Texas Township. Um, that's where I stand on it, so uh, if we vote on this, I will be voting no.
Commissioner Mazur?
Um, I'd like to agree with Commissioner Wheeler, um, if I understood correctly. Um, so I I too would like to see the funding go to After the Storm for Texas Township. They're they're still hurting, so thank you.
Commissioner Ray?
And I'll just add that I agree with both of them.
Commissioner Morales?
I agree with them, we want to help your community.
Commissioner Gissler?
Yes, this is a a package deal with helping Texas Township and creating this additional fund. I'd like to see those two separated.
Thank you, Commissioner Gissler, just the clarification, the motion before us is a two-part motion, includes the termination and the establishment of a severe weather disaster relief fund with the funds allocated back from Texas. If we were to work to try to establish a severe weather disaster relief fund, we would need to identify a funding source to do that. Certainly something that we could do through this motion, or we could do it through the budget process, um, or we could identify another uh, potential revenue source. Go ahead.
Since we're in the middle of the budgeting process, I would suggest we do the former of what you suggested. Texas Township's one thing, creating this additional line item in an annual budget is another.
Vice Chair?
Okay, um, two weeks ago, we we we, well, let's go back. A year and a half ago, we allocated money to Texas Township, and they they utilized their money. There was some disagreement over how they could utilize all of it. Their suggestion was to give some of it back, please correct me if I'm wrong here, I'm trying to go by as best memory as I can. Um, the the township attorney said we should be giving this money to After the Storm, because some of it is used for private property restoration, not improvement, but restoration. And they would feel more comfortable if it went through After the Storm, as opposed to a direct allocation from the township. Am I correct in that assumption?
So uh, Chair, yeah, Vice Chair, so in in a way, yes, so it comes down to a matter of interpretation, and it's legal, it's legalese essentially. Our attorneys outside council, including corporation council, indicated to the township that they are able to leverage the ARPA dollars uh, to. Uh, to remediate property in the township. The township attorney um, does not interpret the law that way. And even though that the ARPA final rule articulates that they can use it for that purpose, the township attorney believes that they cannot. Because they then are deferring to state law, which they believe, the township attorney believes that they're not able to remediate property with public funds. Although in our attorney's opinion, uh, uh, federal law, right statute and rules, Trump states. So anyway, it, it, it comes down to a matter of interpretation, their township attorney does not agree with the federal statute essentially.
And, and kind of my sort of thought process on this and creating and establishing this fund. Was this creates an ability to establish this, this fund. Um, sort of political twenty four thousand dollars is not an awful lot of money. But to establish a severe weather disaster relief fund, as we know, there's going to be more and more storms that come down. You know, the twenty four thousand dollars to me, the twenty two thousand dollars to me are whatever it is now, the different interpretations. Is not the crux of it, the, 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 the real motivating factor to me is establishing a severe weather disaster relief fund. And in previous and in subsequent years down the road, we can then start funding that through the budget process. And as more tornadoes and more disasters come, we, we can be in a position to help them. Now I'll be completely honest, there's no other townships in the state of Michigan that are receiving hundreds of thousands of dollars from their county for disaster relief. That doesn't happen, that happens in Kalamazoo, that doesn't happen anywhere else. So how we're, we're, we're doing this, and if we're going to be in a long-term position to be able to help a lot of these townships. As more and more weather factors come, come through here. I think this is a step in that direction of establishing this fund. But as far as the twenty four, twenty two thousand dollars. You, I've, I've stated many times, that it's not a motivating factor in how I'm going to vote. The, the, the way I'm going to vote is establishing a severe weather disaster relief fund, and that's why I'm, I'm going to be in support of this motion. But I hold no grudge, but, or any for somebody voting differently than me.
Thank you Vice Chair, I'll head, um, you know, hearing additional context where the county really articulated. To spend the money in the way that we've heard requested of us. Um, and it was some disagreement legally um, from outside counsel. That brings that funding back to us for consideration, that we could indeed turn it back to them to allow them to give it to um, a third-party entity. Uh, I think is logical, because it, it just as easily would have been spent uh, in this manner on property remediation. But I think through the course of the dialogue, we have established the need to develop the severe weather fund. To figure out mechanism and to what level we want to support that. Twenty two thousand dollars here won't make or break the establishment of the fund. Um, and so in light of those conditions, I will be voting uh, no on this motion unless we divide the question. Uh, in which we could move the establishment of a fund, uh, but we have no funding source identified. So we could let it, uh, if it does, uh, let the motion prevail or die and then take up further budget discussion around severe weather. Commissioner Ray.
So I guess I'm back to Commissioner Gisler's question, should we be splitting this into terminating the agreement and starting the fund? Do we really want to start a fund with ARPA dollars? If we don't have another severe storm between now and the end of next year, then we'll just be trying to scramble last minute to re-allocate the funding.
Yeah, we can divide the question, is that done, just said a request of the commission, council?
Um, thank you Madam Chair, yes ma'am, a member can ask to divide that question. However, um, because there is a motion on the floor, I believe, um, it would have to, um, I would recommend that that motion be withdrawn and then a motion restated. That divides the question, so only the first part is before the body, thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you Council, Vice Chair.
Oh, this is, let's make a deal. Um, my big, as I said, the big crux of it is to establish a severe weather disaster relief fund. And I know this is going to take multiple years to fund it. If we establish a severe weather disaster relief fund and have an established source of one dollar from strategic reserves per se. Um, that way we establish the fund, then I'll vote to give the uh, the twenty four thousand dollars to the uh, uh, After the Storm for Texas Township. As long as we promise that we're going to establish this fund and then as we look in subsequent years, not, maybe not this year, but subsequent years. If we put money aside to help these townships and help local, uh, you know, little villages and cities, maybe not cities, but villages. As these storms come through in subsequent years, then yeah, I'll, I'm, I'm good.
Commissioner Mazur.
Well, I'm not opposed to beginning a fund, um, but I do want to see Texas Township get the, my sent over to After the Storm.
Oh, I'm seeing Administrator.
I will withdraw my motion, original motion.
Hold on, let me take that, uh, is that, who's supported? Vice Chair Pro Tem, okay, so there's a rescinding of the motion, supported by the motion maker and the support Administrator.
I, I just want to offer some perspective and probably some good news for the Vice Chair. So the county already has, so we have the contingency fund, but we also have a disaster contingency fund. So by way, we already have, or in a way, we already have a severe, we, they've been in every budget. We've always, we've always funded it with five hundred dollars a year, so that disaster contingency fund, that's what we actually collected. Uh, the, we utilized that account to collect the funding, the disaster contingency, section nineteen funding from the state. Uh, in recognition of the um, May seventh, twenty twenty four tornado. So that fund has already been active and has been probably since the inception of the county.
Thank you for the clarification Administrator, Vice Chair.
Um, yeah, so we have an, well, what budget line item is that?
It's, it's right, so it's, it's a, it's a subcategory of the disaster, or I'm sorry, of the contingency account. So then there's a, there's a sub-account, it's the, the disaster contingency fund, it's in one oh one.
And so we, in our contingency, we are, I look at our contingency accounts, we budgeted anywhere from fifty six hundred dollars contingency. Uh, one hundred and twenty six thousand, one hundred and twenty six thousand, we budgeting contingencies, we start every budget year with one hundred and twenty six thousand. You're saying inside that budget in, in, underneath there, there's a line item in that one twenty six that has five hundred for disaster relief?
Yeah, so it's another, so Vice Chair, there's another account uh, within that category, it's called disaster contingency. So I will uh, find the exact, now that we're making all of these line items uh, visible, I'll find it on here for you and I'll, and I'll.
Yeah, I would love to see those line items, that would be helpful for me.
And it's only ever been five hundred dollars, so it's never been anything uh, significant. We, it's only been so significant as of recent, because we received a state disaster section nineteen.
And then you, that was with the fund source or the fund number that you put the, the state money in, into that under the, so you just increased the five hundred dollars from the state reserve into that subsection?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, if I could get a copy of the budget with the line items, that would be really helpful.
We go to Commissioner Morales and then Vice Chair Pro Tem.
I think I'm good, then my next question is going to be how much we got in there, but um, if it's five hundred, when did, is that just from a couple of years ago or?
No, no, so, so this is, that, that line has been there since the inception of the budget, the board has only ever funded five hundred dollars. So there's always been a contingency line that has been, that's, that's always fluctuated depending on county budgets. And then there's always been a line in there for disaster contingency and that is in recognition of if there was a disaster. Um, and the board had to fund, um, you know, an account for emergency management or other uh, just natural disasters, other emergencies. We would have an account to draw down from, so the board could make a budget adjustment, fund that account, and then that's where emergency management, sheriff's office, that, so on and so forth. Could pull funds to remediate and mitigate disasters, but from year to year, that account hasn't really been, it's just an account that's established and it's been funded at about five hundred dollars a year.
Thank you. Vice Chair Pro Tem.
Thank you Chair, um, this is good news, thank you, uh, Dr. Kaplan for bringing that, because I don't ever remember seeing it either, so uh, um, and I should, but I didn't. Uh, is there a way that we could uh, continue to grow that fund a little bit? Because I think five hundred is not sufficient, you know, that'd be great for a couple of days, so we could get some McDonald's hamburgers or something. Feed our people out on the line, but uh, uh, I don't see that as being a sufficient amount of money to go too far. Uh, so, uh, I'd like to see that a little more robust, I guess. Uh, but I would concur that this is good, I have no problem with moving ahead to uh, to terminate the initial agreement. And then uh, fund or send whatever's left to the uh, to the uh, whatever, yep.
Okay, let me, Commissioner Gisler is next, Commissioner Gisler.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to call the question, please.
All right, so we have no motion currently on the floor, the motion made was rescinded, Commissioner Wheeler.
Thank you Chair, I will make the motion to redo the agreement with Texas Township, so they can give those funds to After the Storm.
Good, motion made by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Commissioner Mazur, any further discussion? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry.
Just really quick, as long as we, we'll talk about it the next uh, leadership meeting, but we can maybe put some subsection to create this fund and then build it out of contingency.
Duly noted, all right, with that, uh, Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Commissioner Wheeler?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu?
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Strebs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
You have nine yes.
Good, congratulations to Supervisor and Texas Township, thank you. All right, now we have a final item that was added to the agenda for unfinished business. So do we have a motion, uh, Commissioner Wheeler, sorry, there we go, teamwork?
Thank you Chair, I move that the county enter into a purchase agreement for the property commonly known as two two four West Kalamazoo Avenue. And that the board chair is authorized to execute all documents, including the purchase agreement and closing documents on behalf of the county related thereto.
Motion is made by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler, discussion. Vice Chair Taylor.
I do believe we should have discussion on this, um, is that appropriate? Well, we are looking at an administration building and where we're going to, to, to put it. Um, it's going to take a lot of decisions, we've, we've wrestled with this for a long time. Um, but I do believe that the county seat belongs in the county seat, which is in the city of Kalamazoo. Um, it's not the cheapest option, it won't be the cheapest option, but I do believe it'll hold the most value. And um, so I'm, I'm committed to that.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes, I am for the cheapest option, which is not this one, thank you.
Thank you, so I'll just add some, some thoughts as well, um, you know, I appreciate the deliberation of our, our board colleagues. And I think this is one we gave due consideration to, there were a number of varying options with risks and benefits and rewards among them. Uh, I am excited what we have proposed in our motion this evening. This is a commitment of county government to the county seat, which is in the city of Kalamazoo. But also as an ongoing partner in the revitalization of the urban core of our community. Creating a dynamic downtown with options for people to engage in new ways. To re-energize a space, to bring workers into the community who will shop and engage and do business. And as we endeavor to figure out what we do with the property exactly, while administration will be part of it. There are other uh, really exciting components that we can consider as well. Um, it also affords us flexibility with the Pratt Justice Center. Is that newly constructed and beautiful building is at capacity at this time. And allows us flexibility and synergy uh, with the two locations nearby. While this property will have a new life bred into it, uh, which will also be exciting to watch. So I appreciate all of that uh, from the community and look forward to the work ahead, it'll be exciting. All right, any further comments? All right, with that Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner DeLu?
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler?
No.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler? Commissioner Mazur?
No.
Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Strebs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wheeler?
Yes.
You have seven yes.
Thank you Clerk, that motion carries. All right, thank you all for the efforts this evening, all right, that's going to take us now to our final opportunity for public comment. Uh, members can engage with us in person or on the phone at the meeting number previously provided. Three minutes, professional respectful manner to interact with us, if you're recognized, please share your name, where you're from, anyone interested? Okay, seeing none, we were going to close our final public comment period. And we'll go to our last items, we'll go to the reports of officers, bodies, administrator and controller. All right, so um, I'll share tonight, we, you know, county government has endeavored in a lot of, um, a lot of efforts uh, right now. And it is really um, exciting to be part of, of the team, bringing these things forward. I continue to be, you know, just encouraged when we look at government, um, at other levels being so deeply dysfunctional. And deeply um, counterproductive and directly harmful to the community. And I'm just so glad that this is still spot here, where even when we disagree, um, we are working together and we're doing it well. And oftentimes we find a lot of alignment and agreement, and we're getting to um, very good outcomes because of that. Um, it's been such a heavy week. It's been such a heavy week, um, I found myself this week in rooms with people with wealth I could never understand. And I found myself in rooms with people who didn't have a dish or a piece of furniture of their own. And those two realities exist within our same community. And talking with both of those differing people, both of them have one thing in common, and I'm sure they have more. But they want a wonderful community to live in, they want everybody to be doing well in our community. And that's what each of us are called to do, to be part of that in whatever way it is. Who we are as a community is our choice. The values that we hold up are our choice. And I'll tell you, you know, there are powerful interests that are working so hard right now. To make you and I, whoever the you and I might be, really afraid of each other. To resent each other, to want vengeance from each other. To want rights restricted for each other. We can't be willing to feed into that. Whatever framework or ideology we might hold. Retribution is a path to destruction for all of us. And you don't have to walk down that path. That right to use our voices is one inherent that belongs to all of us. And protecting and defending our right to our survival, to our identities, to our humanity is the foundation of what it means to exist. There are a lot of commentary, um, in the world going right now. Many people have powerful things to, to share and frightening things to share. And I heard, uh, a politician from the other side of the country, um, shared, this is a quote from a theologian that they uh, really like. I don't remember which. Um, but it stuck with me and rang with me today. Specifically on some of the work that we've been addressing for the unhoused in the community. That quote was, if I can get it out? Uh, "I screamed out to God over the starving children until I realized that the starving children was God screaming at me." So when you see those things in the world around you that are ahornd, take the right stand, do what's right, walk into love, let's keep at the work, no matter what we do. Thank you. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Um, we did a lot of really cool things, uh, tonight. Um, really big moves by the county. Um, we're positioning ourselves for hundreds of millions of dollars in, in investment in our community, in our downtown. Um, I think the Chair said it right when she was, uh, talking about the synergy between the courthouse and our administration building. Um, it, having, having a, a commitment to the downtown Kalamazoo, I think is in the long run in our best interests. Um, going out to a different community, even with all the stuff going on in this community, our lack of ability to, to, to partner on a parking garage, or a lack of ability to, to put a skywalk across, um, deal with the fire marshal, deal with, um, just continuous and continuous and continuous that the bike lanes in the city of Kalamazoo. It makes it difficult sometimes to be in Kalamazoo. It is. It's not easy for a business. It's not easy for a government. It's not easy for any sort of institution that tries to get large amounts of people into work and large amounts of people out of work at five o'clock or eight o'clock in the morning or five o'clock in the afternoon. It's not designed to do that right now. But our commitment and our ability to stay focused in Kalamazoo is going to pay dividends in the long run. Um, I, I still think that we need to focus on being in Kalamazoo, even if Kalamazoo may not want people to be focused in, in the city. Um, I still think we have to, we have to have a commitment there. Um, so I, I, it's expensive. It is the more expensive of the options that we had, but I think in the long run it will pay the most dividends. Thank you.
Vice Chair Pro Tem?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we've had a lot. We have a lot on our plate. We're getting a lot of things accomplished. I agree with what's been said so far. Um, we do have concerns. We need to work with our partners, uh, throughout not just the city of Kalamazoo, but Fordwich and, uh, the other two cities, Parchment and Galesburg, the five villages that are out here and the multiple townships that we serve, that we don't just serve the center of this community. We serve all of this community. And, uh, we have to continue to reach out and work with those supervisors and uh, village presidents and city mayors, um, to keep, keep their cities and, and this whole community working together. Um, I have a lot of concerns and I'm hoping that many of them can be addressed as we work towards this thing. Um, I'm hoping that we get moving a little faster on our parking garage. Uh, that is a major complaint that I think every one of us has heard. Uh, I hear it on a daily basis. I don't just hear it once in a great while. But we have to get moving. We're way, way behind on what needs to get done. We need to get on it and get it done, whatever it takes to move ahead. Um, with that said, uh, please, uh, keep in mind the people that Commissioner Gissler mentioned at the beginning, um, our people, our military that protects us, uh, abroad and our folks that protect us here at home, our police and firemen and women that, uh, work in our ambulance services. Take a moment to thank them for their diligence and day in and day out, uh, uh, working to keep us all safe. Those other folks that are out there, the people take time to be a little cautious during the, uh, road construction. Um, I think traffic safety is, is a public health, um, concern. Uh, we're killing a lot of people with cars and trucks and motorcycles. Uh, the recent, uh, information from MDOT shows that every category from pedestrians to bicycles to cars to motorcycles to trucks all went up in twenty-three. That's, uh, most data we have at this point in time. It wasn't a lot, but it went up. And that's not, uh, a, a good thing. We need to bring it down. It needs to go down, but, uh, we need to be, uh, mindful of people's safety and try to keep us all safe and, uh, have a safe week. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pro Tem. Administrator.
Alright, thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem Commissioners. Let, let, let me lift everyone's spirits, okay? We, we, we gotta leave on a good note here. And, and we are. We, we've done, uh, a lot of work tonight, um, including, you know, uh, reviewing the Administrator's recommendation of the budget. On that topic, I want to let you know that, uh, we have made a lot of the, all of the line items, basically, uh, and, and, and so now that, that disaster contingency, contingency line, you'll be able to see that in Fund 101, so navigate through the budget book. You'll be able to see all the line items. What will be completed by tomorrow, hopefully by noon, and we'll send out a note to the board. Uh, finance is, uh, adjusting the columns to show twenty-twenty-two actuals, twenty-twenty-three actuals, twenty-twenty-four actuals, twenty-twenty-five adopted budget, twenty-twenty-five amended budget, and then twenty-twenty-six proposed. So that should give you what you need and the rest of the board what you need to, uh, contemplate, um, you know, your decisions on the budget. Um, so we're looking forward to continued discussions on the seventh as the public hearing, as you know, uh, so, uh, that's our annual meeting, and then we'll continue that annual meeting, uh, for hopefully adopting the twenty-twenty-six budget on October twenty-first. And hopefully even by that time, we'll, uh, have some good news from the state. So I think that, um, they'll have a fire, they already have a fire lit under them, but I think as October, uh, one approaches, they'll really, uh, start to, to go fast. So hopefully by the twenty-first, we'll have some more news on where we stand with revenue sharing and other grant funding for the other departments. Um, I wanted to just highlight, like I do every meeting, and I know Chair, uh, does an exceptional job at this too, um, but, uh, highlight some of the annual reports that we have in our packet and, and, and one of them obviously is, is my office, uh, and the divisions that are under us and, and Corporation Council and, and so I, I want to highlight some of that stuff. But, but first I gotta talk about the widget, the wizardry of, uh, our illustrious, uh, Parks Director, uh, Dave Rackowitz. He, I, I don't know how that team does the work, uh, and I know that Dave, I don't know if he ever sleeps, but, uh, to have one point six million visits recorded in county park system, including the Expo Center, is just nothing short of phenomenal. And, uh, I talk very highly, I speak very highly of our parks, uh, system. Uh, it's easily one of the best in the state. I mean, I don't know how they maintain, I, I just never understand how they maintain as much grounds as they have. So, um, just a phenomenal, uh, work that they do, and I'm, I'm highly appreciative. We use that park systems every day. And so, um, you know, and our favorite, because, uh, you know, we're biased, we live close enough to it, but it's River Oaks Park. It's just a phenomenal park. So, um, as you know, they did, uh, do a ribbon cutting on the Arthur and Meljord Wollam Nature Preserve, and so another phenomenal asset to the community that, um, I don't know how they did the work there as quickly as they did, but it's just, again, phenomenal. So if you get a chance, go out there, enjoy the nature. And, uh, you know, our Expo Center is, is heavily used, um, you know, economic impact exceeding eleven point nine million dollars. So, uh, hosting over a hundred nineteen events, it's, it's, it's a great asset, and that's something that's publicly, uh, operated through the, uh, uh, Parks and Expo Center. And so, uh, it's just, it's just, uh, phenomenal, and they do a, a, a great, uh, amount of work and, uh, highly appreciative of all the staff. And, you know, uh, Dave depends on a lot of seasonal workers, so like Chair said, we are able to attract, uh, the dedicated staff that we have because of the wages that we offer. And I think that they find, uh, some fulfillment in working for the county and, and through Dave's leadership and his staff, uh, find that our leaders are capable and supportive. So, uh, definitely appreciate that. I wanted to, um, you know, selfish, selfishly, uh, prop up our office too. Um, you know, my office, including Corporation Council, Emergency Management, uh, Communications, DNI, uh, the Administrative Services Team, really, uh, are, uh, here to support the Board of Commissioners and the myriad, uh, priorities and, uh, goals of this board and, uh, in support of, uh, uh, you know, elevating this county, ensuring that everyone has a prosperous, uh, life. And so, um, one of the huge undertakings, obviously, that we took was, uh, embarking on this twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-nine strategic plan. And that was a lot of, uh, hard work, and we were able to engage the Board of Commissioners, but, uh, staff and all the other elected officials, the courts, um, to ensure that we provided a clear roadmap moving forward, uh, for these next five years. Um, we also, uh, endeavored on, uh, you know, creating this new interactive digital budget book, which, like I said on the fly, we can make these changes and we're able to do it so quickly because, one, we have a capable staff and finance, but two, the technology that we leverage. And so when we need changes made on the fly, we can do that. And so it's, it's, it's a good thing that we have it. But also expanding all of these, uh, benefit enhancements, so, uh, paid parental leave, uh, you know, twelve weeks on particip-, uh, uh, offering tri-share program, the care share program, which that'll roll out, um, hopefully in October, uh, for the care share portion of the program, but enhanced, uh, emergency management by moving that operation, um, in, into administration and create a newer emergency operations plan, ensuring that we can be responsive to disasters. Uh, major milestones, obviously, opening in twenty-twenty-four, the, uh, Judge Charles A. Pratt Justice Center, um, huge undertaking. Uh, and so a lot of work is, is always done sort of behind the scenes. We like to be behind the scenes and make the Board of Commissioners look good, and I hope that you, uh, see in twenty-twenty-four and realize that, uh, you know, the Board of Commissioners has a lot to be proud of, and we're happy to continue to support you all in that, in that endeavor. So, uh, as we begin, you know, and, and finish out twenty-twenty-five, we hope that, uh, the next annual report will highlight more of those successes. Um, and then last but not least, but the, uh, the Medical Examiner's Office, you know, uh, sort of a somber topic, right? I mean, they just, but, but yeah, like, you know, they, they go through critical, uh, tough, often, um, unseen roles and, and, uh, performing those duties and ensuring justice and public health. And so we just appreciate the partnership that we have with them. Um, and the accuracy and, uh, duties that they perform to ensure that, uh, our public safety and, and prosecution and just those sort of offices have the tools and the information that they need to, uh, uh, proceed accordingly. Um, I want to say for October seventh, getting back to the county budget, uh, we will have a final recommendation also available on the community grants, uh, portion of the, of the budget. So that's a four hundred thousand dollar pool. That has taken quite some time to sift through. There are sixty-one or sixty-two applications. There's just a lot of information. I will, you, you probably will not like our recommendation, and, and, I, I mean, there, there's just a lot of applications in there, so please continue looking at those. We'll deliver something to you, and then, uh, at the end of the day, we just have to stay within that four hundred thousand dollar mark. Uh, I, I can pause. I know Vice Chair has a question.
Vice Chair, I don't think it's fair to you for us to ask you to, to put those community, if, if it's okay with this board, if you could just give us maybe the top ten or twelve and then have us fight it out. Because I, I just don't want to put you in that position, and I don't think it's fair to, for us to put you in that position. I don't think it's good leadership on our part to do that to you.
Absolutely. Well, I appreciate that, Vice Chair. We can certainly, we can certainly pivot and do that. It's a lot of, you know, there's a lot to sift through, so I, I know, but, uh, and I think, you know, next year, we'll also be able to fine tune some of the processes and the applications, so, uh, but this is obviously, we ask for community's, uh, patience and grace because it is the first year we're doing this in recognition of community need. And I will just say, you know, the, the last thing I wanted to touch on was the purchase of two-twenty-four West, uh, Kalamazoo Avenue. Um, and that addresses, um, you know, our, our needs, our growing needs in the county. Um, it's, uh, it really aligns, um, uh, and secures land that's necessary, um, to, uh, work in unison with our new parking garage. And so we're looking forward to maximizing the taxpayer investment there. Uh, renovating this current facility would not be as efficient as it would be to, uh, and, and, you know, as opposed to building a new facility because this is, uh, undersized, it's outdated, um, and, uh, there's been years, uh, in, 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 you know, renovating this building could create years of service disruption, which we recognize as well, want to make sure they're able to, uh, mitigate. And lastly, I would say, um, we're excited because planning this new facility will ensure, uh, a modern, accessible and future-ready, uh, space for, um, acceptance of, uh, you know, and growth in services, uh, while supporting downtown revitalization, which I think is key to ensuring success of the entire county. So we're looking forward to this huge, huge, huge undertaking, and I'm sure our Director of Buildings and Grounds is even more excited because we just have more work to do. So, uh, just thank you for the, the part, the continued partnership tonight. I don't take, you know, any offense in the tough questions we get about the budget. The budget's never easy. Uh, they're great questions, and we're happy to continue, uh, engaging with the board on those questions. And so have a great night and always happy to answer any questions. Take care.
Thank you, Administrator. One more highlight from that Parks and Rec, uh, annual report was Director Rackowitz in a suit again. I got to see that twice. Alright. Commissioner Wheeler?
Thank you, Chair. Since we're talking about Parks and Rec, I was actually in the Wollam Preserve this morning, and I did the Heartland Trail, so it's two and a half miles, so it was fun. I've been in there a bunch, so. Um, very excited for what's to come. I think we did really great work, had some really robust, um, conversation, and just want to say thank you, uh, to my fellow commissioners. You guys always teach me things every time I come here, um, especially being the youngest on this board. Um, and I think I'm the youngest commissioner ever elected. Maybe he's a female. Okay, I'll take the female one. Um, it, uh, uh, it always humbles me when, uh, uh, I hear some, especially when John talks numbers, I just, over my head. Um, and then when Jen speaks from the heart. So, Chair, sorry. Um, but other than that, have a great night.
Commissioner Morales?
Thank you, Chair. A great evening. I'm excited, um, about what we're bringing to Kalamazoo and that we are keeping uh, one of our landmarks downtown. I think that's very important for Kalamazoo County, even though it's coming at a prettier penny, uh, for you and Gissler. Um, I love the glass building, but I'm still scared it's on tornado alley, and we might have to use that budget to fix some of that glass. Um, it's a beautiful building. Um, I'm trying to stay on a happy note, but there's so much going on in our country that it's very, very hard to, um. I will say that I do see growth from the entire board as opposed to when I came on the board. Um, I really believe before twenty-twenty-eight, Gissler is gonna have a DEI shirt on. Really do, really do. Um, but no, I appreciate, um, the bipartisan leadership that we have. We don't agree on everything. I know that it's hard for everybody to look at what's going on in our country right now. I don't condone any type of violence of any sort. I also don't condone evil. And if we're looking at it from a Christian aspect, for those who are believers, our, our source of belief doesn't condone it either. Doesn't condone hatred, evil, killing, starving, a lot of the stuff that's being, that's going on these days. Um, and we stand here and we say our pledge of allegiance every meeting, and the last words we say is indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And I'm, I'm beginning to question some of that, uh, from colleagues across the nation. But we'll get there. I'm saying all that to say that even though other things are going on, I think we still handle the business of all of our constituents, um, without bias to the best of our ability, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate that. Um, I do have some cons-, um, constituents reach out. We had two hangings in Kalamazoo County and people are nervous. We had another hanging, um, of someone in Mississippi. But the fact that it's, it's jumping around from state to state is concerning to me. Um, what concerns me more are the budget cuts when we talk about law enforcement and how they handle situations like this and being short-staffed. And I want to be able to call law enforcement and they come to my address and be able to protect whoever is on my block in my community. So I thank all of you that are in service. Um, I also got a, uh, some pushback about the Millwood property where the, the water was cut off and garbage wasn't being taken care of. Um, after some phone calls, the city did turn that water back on. I did make a comment with, um, MLI to hopefully get those entities that support that they need. Nobody should be paying rent and their water's cut off or, you know, they're just not taken care of. Um, then lastly, I did get, um, a call about the employees who were dismissed from, you know, their, their place of business. I don't agree with anything, but everything, but, um, sometimes we have to stand our ground and it doesn't work in our favor. So sad about all the things that went on and for those employees facing that hashback, that, um, that firing. And then for all of you who reached out to me as I, um, laid my mother in love to rest. I appreciate you all. It was a very difficult, uh, three weeks watching a healthy person decline and take their last breath. So I appreciate all you all who reached out to me and showed me love with that. With that, am I the last one? Or Dale? I was about to say.
Thank you Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Mazer.
Okay, I just have a few things. Number one, the Wollam Nature, Nature Preserve is beautiful. And, uh, so I, I recommend everyone going out there and visiting it. Um, as I said earlier, the Senior Village Ad-Hoc Committee, I was so impressed with the discussions that took place and the process and the selection of the gap services. I learned a lot and it's just, it's, it's remarkable what, what we can offer, you know, to our, to our citizens. And then last, everybody come out to the Civic this weekend. Kalamazoo is opening on Friday. And then we are also playing next weekend. So, and I, I, I do know an Oboe player in the pit.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioner Mazer. I know, he's so excited. Commissioner Gisler.
Thank you Chair. I, uh, will hopefully not take very long. I want to move through a few items fast. Uh, I will tell you this, I was tempted when, uh, Tammy Ray asked if I would do the invocation today to say something about the assassination of Charlie Kirk. I chose not to, uh, but I did look at the words in my invocation and I've got two or three different copies that I rotate through sort of. And I'm, I'm really pleased that we are the kind of board that we are. We disagree sometimes a little, sometimes vehemently. And I don't know, we've probably resorted to name-calling occasionally, but we don't ever get to the point where we're gonna condone or activate violence. And that just has no place in our country, period. I won't say anymore. Now, onto some local stuff. The, uh, Road Commission is having an open house on September twenty-fourth. That's what, a month from tomorrow, right? And between three and six, and they're gonna have some of their people there to basically talk anything you want to talk about with roads. They'll have engineers there, there, they'll have, uh, guys that operate some of the equipment. Uh, it, it's just a, a general purpose open house for the community. And on October seven, I guess it's all day. Oh, nine to three, there's gonna be the Senior Expo. The Older Adult Services Advisory Council is, you know, big on this. And, uh, they, I don't know if they've got the, the numbers out yet, but they have hundreds of exhibitors, people that set up tables and will take blood pressures and show you where to get dental help and that sort of thing. It's really a valuable thing to do. And on the twenty-seventh of September, which is a Saturday, Comstock between noon and three is holding their, I don't know, they have it almost every year. It's now called Fall Fest. And it's a combination of the Parks Department at Comstock Township and the Downtown Development Authority. And they have, I can't even tell you what they're gonna have this year, but last year they had, uh, live music. They had all kinds of plants for sale. I think that since they are so well populated with Wenkes and River Street and some of the others, they were closing out their, their inventory and there were some real deals to be had. Uh, I participate with, uh, Jeffrey Townsend, one of the, uh, Jeffrey Lawrence, I think. Uh, one of the ministers out there and we do a hoop shoot. He coaxes the players to shoot and I shag the balls and throw them back to him. I'm capable of doing that nowadays. Uh, I will also mention to you that, uh, tomorrow is not only included in the Constitution itself, but also, and it will be celebrating, uh, its two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary in twenty thirty-seven. So it's still a ways to go. It's, it's the very same thing from the same folks, only now they've, they've done it fancier and they have the Declaration of Independence included. So it's, it's pretty cool. Uh, but I'm not gonna give them away. If you guys want them, I'll be happy to give them to you, but I'm not spreading them around because I know, well, for one thing, the cost went up this year. And, uh, you know, I'll be happy to provide you if you need them. Thank you, Monty. That's great. Oh my God, look at you guys. Incredible. I, I, I'm pleasantly surprised. Thank you. And the last thing I want to do is mention that, uh, the two days after Constitution Day, which is the seventeenth, is the nineteenth. And I'm really almost hesitant to throw this out because I tried to be kind of serious about all this stuff. The nineteenth of September is Talk Like a Pirate Day.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jalum.
Well, I'm not the youngest on the board, but also I'm not the oldest. So that's my saving grace.
My shoes are younger than you.
Chair Strabs, I appreciate your passion. Um, also it's bad timing on my part, but for our next meeting, I will not be here. And we're right in the middle of a budget talk. So I just want this board and administration to remember our number one priority is public safety. Sheriff's Department, Prosecutor's Office, Courts, please keep that in mind because we have to keep Kalamazoo a great place to live, work, and play.
Oh, Administrator, would like, uh, yes Administrator.
So, sorry, I, I really, so just two quick things. One, uh, if you have your county laptop here this evening, if you could leave it with me because we have to upgrade it to Windows eleven. So it, uh, oh, perfect. And then, um, lastly, I would be remiss and, and, and I, I'm, I'm so glad I thought about it. Uh, but our DEI department, um, worked in concert, uh, with the Clerk's Office, um, in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. And in particular, a, uh, champion, uh, Isabel Galvez, um, championed this, uh, this luncheon that we had where, um, actually our Chief Deputy Clerk here, uh, was able to, uh, you know, shout the, uh, the El Grito. And so just awesome, awesome, awesome experience. And so I, I just wanted to give shout out to our DEI department, Isabel, uh, our Clerk's Office, and, and, and just everyone that was able to participate. We had a lot of departments in, in the building, uh, meet downstairs in the break room to, to enjoy, uh, some fellowship and, and, uh, great, uh, Hispanic food, which is some of my favorite cuisine. And so anyway, I just wanted to let the board know that we have, uh, that kind of culture that we're establishing here. And, uh, employees really enjoyed it. So just wanted to, just wanted to, yeah, and it was educational. So thank you, uh, to Corporation Council. So yeah, anyway, I just wanted to lift that up and just inform the board of that. So thank you.
Thank you Administrator. And before I forget, tomorrow is my daughter's birthday. So happy birthday to Holly. She's seven tomorrow. All right, with that, we are adjourned.